I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I would be happy to take a nomination for board chair.
I nominate Dave Connery.
I second that.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Dave Connery as our board chair? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have it. Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Take it away.
I finally won a popularity contest that was held inside of a high school. So, thank you. Thanks Elaine. So we'll move on to our other appointments that we need. Could I get a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Colleen McKinnon.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Colleen is vice chair. All right, could I get a nomination for clerk?
I'd nominate Joan Lenis.
Okay. You have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Kelly, any other? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and a nomination for assistant clerk?
I'll nominate Kelly Bowen.
Okay. Do you have a second from this side of the table? There we go. Any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So for appointments, we need a policy committee representative?
I'm a volunteer.
Okay. All right, and we just need the one? Or do?
I think we only need one, right Cindy?
Okay.
Every local board also has a committee member.
Right. The negotiations committee rep, we need a primary-
We don't need that because we're not negotiating right now.
Okay. There's-
I'll be that.
You'll be the, you'll be that, okay. Local standards board? What is the-
Who's the current local standards board? I know it was Marilyn.
I had done it. It's an amazing, amazing board. I can't now-
You just can't do it. You know what Joan might, what might be helpful is if you said a little bit about what it entails?
What it is.
Since it's an amazing board.
I can. It's been, it's been a long time and I know this, the agency of education has changed some of the stuff, but your, every seven years our faculty renew their license and they, it's their planning, it's their professional development, and you get to see portfolios and they are, it's just a whole different level or sphere of knowing our faculty and what they accomplish with our children in education.
So I think they meet at the central office once a month. And there are reps, teacher reps, almost all teacher reps, one administrator rep perhaps.
And a community member at large and a board member.
And a board member. And what they do is they review the applications for relicensure. So every seven years teachers have to, do you, are you the board, are you the-
I'm the admin rep and-
Thank you.
Things have changed quite a bit over the last year where, where how people put in for their license renewal is completely different now and it's now management and oversight where teachers aren't coming in to present before it.
Okay.
So that, that piece has changed, but the group still gets together as needed. It can either be monthly or every other month.
Okay.
And they get trained on the software so that they can help support the teachers who are going through the licensing at the local level. So it's, it would be, it'd be a very easy board to serve on.
Anybody interested, I guess? Kathy, you would do that?
I'd be willing to do that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Leadership 135, representative?
So that is the succession planning committee that's already met. There is a committee, I don't know who is, I don't remember because we haven't met for a long time. But that was the notion of, let's have a plan for, you know, like in 15 years when Elaine and Bob retire and when Jeffrey retires or whatever. So let's be thoughtful about, what do we do if we need somebody within the year? What's our plan? What's the plan if we need somebody and we know that we need the person in three years? And what's the, what, what, the reason it's called 135 leadership is, and what else do we do to nurture leadership within our own ranks? So that's the committee, I think it's important work. It's just, I think it kind of took a backseat to the first strategies committee that morphed into the Act 46 committee.
I'm wondering if it would be, if a board chair would be helpful to be on that because they tend to be in the middle of some of the board chair discussions and-
I think Jean was on that.
Yeah.
Mark, are you?
So who else sits on it?
Who has currently-
I think I was on it.
I was on it also.
I mean, I'm willing to sit on it.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll nominate Kevin who's not here. Just sit on it.
All right. So our last is-
You should be on that committee, for sure.
I should?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Don't you think?
And then the last is SU strategic planning?
So that morphed into Act 46. So we already have that committee.
Okay.
And I think that when you guys took the motion last year to form this committee, you said that the people who were voted on for the committee, appointed to the committee, would serve out the term, meaning we'd, we'd let Act 46 and the study committee's recommendations and all of that play itself out through, through its end. So that means that what you would be doing is reaffirming the people who are on that committee.
So that committee met a few times during the summer, then came back to this board, made the recommendation to put together the study committee. So that committee really has not been active except in the more Act 46 study committee. And it seems to me that maybe it's not, you know, until we know where we're going with-
Right, because, well, I just want to remind you that the reason we had this was because at the retreat, which is when we look at, do we need a new committee? Do we need to charge a new committee for work? In May of last year, the legislature had not yet passed legislation and this board knew that it needed to be on top of that. So it said, let's charge a committee to stay abreast. So as the legislation gets passed, let's stay abreast of it. If the legislation doesn't get passed, well, let's see what we want to do regardless. Once we knew what the legislation was, this then, by design, became the Act 46 study committee. Because it was about governance. Could be that it will morph back to that depending on what happens.
All right. And our treasurer is Jed Graff, 1960 Olympic gold medalist. No, 64, 1964 in Tokyo, that's right. Still kind of starstruck every time I see him.
I told them it's just because he's tall, he reached the end of the pool.
Okay, so we'll move on to 3.0, adjustments to the agenda. Does anyone have any? Yes?
Can we do introductions? I don't know.
Yeah, we've got some new papers.
Oh, great Colleen, thank you.
Yeah.
Great. So we'll start with our newest face on the far end of the table here.
Hi, I'm Amanda Marvin. I'm on the Williston School Board. I was recently elected to the top march to the Williston School Board and then wanted to get involved here. I don't know what information you guys would like. I have a five and three-year-old daughter who are both in preschool. And I stay at home with them right now and I'm re-entering the workforce slowly. This is kind of my first good thing.
Karen McLeod, I'm another Williston rep to the CSSU board. I started filling in on the CSSU board in, I think, November when Giovanna stepped down. And I'm, I'm on the Act 46 committee as well for Williston. And Kevin Mara is our, our Williston School Board Chair and he's our third rep to, to the CSSU board. He's going to be very quiet.
He's in Las Vegas right now.
He's in Las Vegas, yeah.
I'm Polly Valet. I am the board chair of the CBU School Board, rep from Williston. And I'd also like to introduce someone who's not here, her name is, her name is Erin Brady. She has been elected to the CBU School Board to replace Jean Johnson. And she had part of commitments that she could not be for tonight, but you will see her there in the future.
Hi, I'm Lorna Johnson. Though I usually have to check my name tag in front, but I don't have today. So we'll sketch it. I'm from Charlotte, I'm on the CBU board.
Eric Beal, Charlotte Central School Board.
Mark McGurran, Charlotte Central School Board. And our third member Susan Norshin, who couldn't be here at CBU.
I'm Bob Mason, Central Office Chief Operations Officer.
Elaine Pinkney, Central Office Superintendent.
Dave Connery, the chair of the Shelburne School Board as well.
Kate Roberts on the Heinsberg Board.
Kathy Stockman, Vice Chair of the Shelburne Community School Board.
Kelly Bowen, I'm the Chair of the St. George Board and the Act 46 Study Committee. Sorry, not Chair, just a member.
And Joan Lenis, a Shelburne resident on CBU Board and on this board.
Colleen McKinnon, Heinsberg Board.
Bill Baker, Heinsberg Board.
Jeff Evans, Director of Learning and Innovation.
Megan Wright, Director of Student Support Services.
Cindy Canaman-Warr, Director of Human Resources.
Sandy Raymond, CSSU.
Mike Cantor, Director of Network Services.
Busy guy.
Sweated out his browns, running out of bullets.
They're very grateful for Mike.
Glad he's here.
Okay, thanks for that suggestion, Colleen.
We should have 17? I mean, I could have 15.
Because some people, even, you counted the people who've been introduced.
We're missing somebody. Polly's not here.
All right, you're here.
Three, four, five, six.
Bob's normally here.
Is she your third?
Twelve.
There you go. So it's Kevin and Bob, probably.
And one more from the Williston.
Susan Nosker.
Yep.
Is that it? Is that 17? Okay. So are, any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to four, which is Audience Communications. And I assume, is there anyone in the audience who's here to speak or you're just, okay? Nope? So we'll move on to 5.0, our presentation on risk management. Do you have a background for us?
In case you didn't print off the document from distribution, I'm here to introduce Mike Boardman, seated in the front row, who is, manages our insurance portfolio for the schools. He's obligated to come speak to you all once a year for policy E5, Risk Management. And in essence, it's the policy of the board that you get some understanding of the risk management process within the school, in particular, the portfolio of insurance that we have surrounding the work you and we all do in a manner that doesn't cause us financial or legal risk. So he's going to give you an overview of what that portfolio looks like. And I'll turn the microphone over to you, Michael, and thanks for being here.
Thank you. I know a few of you have been through this presentation in the last couple of years and I apologize if it's repetitious, but it's, it's a good, it's a good opportunity for us to learn just a little bit about the insurance. And as Bob mentioned, this is risk management, the topic. And risk management, part of it is the insurance coverage that we provide. But risk management is also preventing claims from occurring, that we spend quite a bit of time. We go to each of the schools. In fact, we were just at Charlotte Central this past week doing a walkthrough with Liberty, Liberty Mutual, who's our insurance carrier, just inspecting the premises for safety, all sorts of, you know, not that we found any, but code violations, making sure it's up to OSHA compliance. And so anyways, that's another part of our risk management duties, as well as risk transfer, which as any attorney knows, any contract has insurance language on it, in it. So Bob and I speak, or spend a lot of time reviewing the contracts and figuring out ways to transfer the exposure to another entity. Like if one of the schools is allowing an entity to use the premises or coming on to make a presentation, we make sure they have insurance and their insurance is going to protect Chitting and Southport, any of the schools that they're coming onto. So that's all part of the risk management as well. And then the last part is managing claims that unfortunately occur. It's just inevitable, we're going to have claims. So we have to manage those claims properly, help employees get back to work. So that's a lot, that's all encompassed in this risk management discussion. But we're going to focus now on the insurance part of it, and that's what they hand out that Bob passed out. Just to get you comfortable, to make sure there's nothing that's very obviously missing. We had a good conversation last year on a couple of topics that we addressed afterwards and we did increase some of the coverage. So we'll go over that. The first page is property coverage and that's pretty simple. It's, it's all the brick and mortar, everything that's inside the buildings. And we list all of the locations here down below. We have almost $140 million worth of insurance coverage on all of the buildings, as well as everything that's inside the buildings. We have flood coverage, we have earthquake coverage, up to $10 million. And then we have a lot of miscellaneous other coverages. We just tried to list some of them, like blanket hardware and media, which is protecting all the computer systems, electrical arcing, those type of claims that occur. And then we also have data compromise, which has become a lot more frequent. You hear a lot of that, that's someone hacks in, steals data from schools. You read a lot about that. You hear, read a lot about it in the paper, usually retail stores. But all of the schools contain a lot of confidential data that hackers are constantly trying to get into your computer system. So this provides both first-party and third-party protection. If the school district gets sued by someone whose data was stolen and then their identity was stolen. But it's also protecting the school that if they have to re, rebuild, re, if their software was damaged, due to a hacker, et cetera. So it's both first-party and third-party for any hacking into our system.
Michael, just local content, we were victims this week. Is that right? I'm not sure we're going to file a claim, but let the record show.
What is the- We might encourage you to consider increasing those coverage.
Isn't that the way we always do it with insurance? You take it up the day after you have a claim.
Okay, so I don't know if anyone has questions on your property coverage?
Yeah, I do.
Sure.
What is the stovepipe school?
That's what-
That's what we're doing over here.
Okay, stovepipe schools, little white school in front of the Williston Central School. It's been brought to my attention that Talcott Road is a little bit distant from where that school is located. What's amazing is it's said Talcott Road for 14 years. I'm glad you're all reading it and we'll get that correct.
And it's stovepipe corner school is its official.
Stovepipe corner.
I believe is its official. It's one of the old, original one-room schoolhouses in Williston that was relocated there.
Thank you, Mike and I'll fix that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, then we get into crime coverage. And this is what, we had a lot of discussion last year, blanket employee dishonesty last year. We're encouraged to look at increasing this. So we increased this from $100,000 to $400,000. So this is theft by employee of any of the school, any of the various schools or supervisory unions' cash or assets. So it's $400,000 with a $4,000 deductible. And then the, the rest of this, $20,000, $10,000. Blanket employee dishonesty, stealing cash, it's more, someone sets up a fictitious vendor and they're sending checks to it. You read about it in the paper a lot. It's happening quite a bit here in Vermont, unfortunately. The rest of these cover just theft disappearance, that's money and security. So someone breaks in and steals cash. That's less and less likely now, these days, because people aren't carrying as much cash. Computer fraud is if someone hacks into your computer and then wires funds. They hack into your computer, get into your bank account and wire funds. That's what computer fraud is. So then we get into the general liability and this is, any bodily injury?
Sure. I'm sorry, I just asked a question. I'm sure Bob has this covered, but I got to ask it anyway. These deductible amounts look super low to me based upon the size of an organization we are. There've been discussions about the, the cost savings of the policies versus increasing the deductibles. I mean, we can stomach a $5,000 deductible pretty easily, so.
Yeah, we certainly can look, look into it. The crime coverage is relatively inexpensive. I think we're paying for all of this coverage.
Well, I looked at the front page too, just all of them. I was looking at all of them. Just that deductibles looked, except for the 50 on flood coverage. I mean, building contents, you know, I mean, I know in my business, if I had a $5,000, I wouldn't even file a claim because I'd pay that out of my pocket because my policy's going to go up and you're going to come and examine me, maybe cancellation risk, so on and so forth. So is it just worth the discussion to-
It's a good point, Bill. We'll, we'll take a look at, at each of them.
Because you can really, I know in just, you know, my, the real estate I own, by increasing my deductibles from $1,000 to $10,000, my yearly costs went down by a significant percentage.
Yeah, I think we have looked at it. It wasn't a great savings.
Okay.
But we'll do it again.
Okay.
If we can get a feel for how much each school, is it, it's a school by, how much can each school absorb? Can they, $25,000, you know, make it, you know, we've had, we've had plenty.
Sure.
Property claims over. So we just got to get a sense for-
Right, just look at the risk and figure out whether I think it's worth the discussion, worth having.
Yeah, it's a good, yeah, it's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, general liability, that's bodily injury, property damage where the, the school district gets sued. We've got $1 million here, that's the each occurrence. So for any one lawsuit, we have $1 million. And then we have an umbrella that goes on top of that that we talked later, so $10 million. So for any one lawsuit, we have $11 million. So that would be, I guess we can use real-life examples we've had in the past, bookcases falling. Bodily injury to a student is probably the most likely, but it could be somebody walking into the building, it could be somebody falling, tripping down the piste at a basketball game. So we have $11 million for any one lawsuit. And then we've, we've got a lot of additional coverages here. This is where we're covering the nurse professional, the volun, any volunteers that's volunteering for the school district and if they get brought into a suit. In fact, all of you are covered here, all the board members for bodily injury or property damage you might cause, which is not likely. But it is where we're providing coverage for the captors, any therapist. We also were finding sexual misconduct liability. So that's, that's the big-
You go back to this $11 million? I'm trying to figure out where $11 million comes into that.
Yeah, I sort of jumped a page ahead. If you go to the next page, there's an excess liability for the $10 million.
Okay, so you were not talking about the commercial general liability?
Well, the $10 million goes over, it's called an umbrella, so it goes over your auto, it goes over your general liability. So I sort of jumped ahead so that people weren't concerned, we only had $1 million in coverage. It's sort of, yeah. So for your general liability, if you go to the next page, you'll see the excess and you'll see what that goes over. It goes over the auto. So you have $11 million for any bodily injury that occurs in an auto accident. And it goes over the general liability, goes over the educators' legal, employment practices, and sexual molestation.
Okay, my page is saying $10 million?
Right, on top, so it's excess on top of the $1 million.
Thank you.
And then if we go up to the top of that next page, educators' legal. So this is if a teacher gets sued for wrongful education, it's protecting the board in your decision-making. If you get brought into a suit for decisions that causes somebody mental anguish, causes them monetary damages, you decide to lose construction, impacted their property, the board is protected here. It's also tied into that same policy is employment practices liability. So that's if an employee sues for wrongful termination, sexual harassment, discrimination in the workplace, that's where the employment practices liability comes. And then the, the excess liability goes over all of those. The last page, we got the auto. So here we've got $1 million and the, as we just mentioned, the excess goes over that. So you've got $10 million on top of $1 million, so $11 million for any one bus accident, something that occurs with any of your vehicles. I think we have 64 units that we're insuring under this. Most of them are buses, we have some pickups, some private passengers. I don't think we're covering Bob's Lamborghini. I don't think that-
That one's covered by the theft disappearance.
Oh, you all know too much.
Then the last, the last part is the workers' comp. And we just talked a little bit here, we talked about the experience mod. We spent a lot of time trying to prevent workers' comp claims and then managing workers' comp claims where they occur because to the school district, they're, they're about half the premium. So the workers' comp is a big part of the premium. So you can see, we, we talk here just about the total losses we've had over the years. So you can see we've had some $291,000 year losses. You know, we average about $150,000 in workers' comp claims a year, which is, it's a lot. And that affects the premium. But as you can see, this experience mod, which affects your premium, you know, it went up a bit last year. And I, some of you are more familiar than others with what an experience mod is, but that's just a measurement of your loss experience. It's a simple way of saying it, it's your losses divided by your premium. It's not quite that simple, but it's, it's more what they expect you to have for losses given your payroll. And the numerator is what you actually have for losses. So this coming year, we're going to be at .77, which is great. So the average is a 1.0. So we're, we're better than average, despite all that claim activity. I think the supervisory union's doing a good job.
Michael, I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. Did you say about 50% of the claims are under this particular?
50% of the premiums.
Premiums.
Probably 90% of the claims.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Mike, Mike outlined earlier that, that risk management is done not just with insurance premiums, but behavior within our system, both to prevent accidents before they occur and then thoroughly analyze accidents after they occur. Based on the premiums, that's probably most evident in the workman's comp arena. Cindy and I spend a monthly meeting going through each accident with three or four other people at the table and assessing if there's areas identified now that we need to go into and look at proactively. And that's, that's helped med significantly, kind of control the, both the premiums and the incurred costs annually.
Yep. So we're excited that, that lower experience mod, the premium, definitely expect it to come down this, this year. Very excited this new Jeffed mod.
Thank you.
But it reflects a lot of work on everyone's part. Cindy and HR team does a lot of work on this.
What are our average workman comp claims?
The type of claims?
Injuries?
Yep. Yeah, there's all sorts of injuries. It's everything from getting off bus, even a bus driver sometimes getting on, in and out of a bus. Slips and falls up and downstairs. It's athletic coaches, senior.
Ours tend to be mostly slip and falls, which aren't surprising in Vermont in the winter. And then our other biggest one is actually interactions with children in our parent educators. Fighting, kicking, those kind of things. They don't, they don't add up to big dollar claims, but they add up to the number of claims.
Well, those are good ones to be, to be right on top of it with whoever the manager or supervisor is.
or supervisor is, if the threat in the accident occurs, to get the right level of care, to get it quickly, so that the claim stays at $3,000 or $2,000 rather than $30,000 or $20,000. And then, and then we do have coverage for that unfortunate event that kind of pins the meter, and something very, very significant with whatever employees occurs. But, but those happen infrequently in our system.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions? I know you've got a lot to go through today.
A question, sir. If there were mergers or wanted to be, would that change? Have any material change on the nature of the cost?
So merger between the schools within CSSU? Not at all. No, it's all viewed as one portfolio.
I might not agree with that right at the moment. Just consider the negotiations to be done.
Wow, that's great.
Throwing something at me.
Yeah.
I just want to add another question about, back to the crime section with the theft. I mean, I think all of our schools, we do fundraising in our schools, and I don't know that, I just think about some of our other schools in Vermont that have had some thefts from fundraising events, whether they be bingo nights or things like that. And, you know, what's our, what amount of money are we storing over the weekend in our, in our schools? And is that, is this, you know, covering what we'd get from something like that? I just...
It's a great question, because the right, the right approach to this one, again, is a mix of good business practice and effective coverage.
Mm-hmm.
In, in the case of your schools, we have worked for a number of years at getting cash out of the system, so that we don't run that risk, narrowing the responsibility of, of who has responsibility for money. So this, this, unfortunately, this dishonesty section focuses pretty much on the leadership team, the finance people, the HR people, and the bookkeepers in the system.
Oh, okay.
Who actually have access.
So it doesn't...
And we have a, we have a pretty well-defined system of separating duties, so that the person who approves a requisition is not also the one to approve the invoice and cash the check.
Uh-huh.
You'll, you'll not find that separation of duties quite as easy to obtain when you get to smaller schools in Vermont. Someone will have one person doing all of that stuff, which is really risky from a financial standpoint.
I guess my question is, so I'm specifically thinking of a fundraiser in Williston last year that brought in over $10,000 in one night, and that money was stored in the school. And so, I just, are we, if, if something, if someone walked out with the safe, you know, or whatever, I don't know where it was stored, because it was not my, I'm, I'm just asking about that kind of...
Yeah, we, we are covered, but more importantly, we work with Peggy in this case, to make sure that the minute it's handed to her, it's in a secure place.
Okay.
And it's converted from cash to a deposit slip.
Right away. Okay.
The earliest moment.
Yeah, okay. I'm just, you know...
So that, that's in essence how we work it. It's a great question. And the, the risk right now is on a smaller scale, because the monies left in cash are typically those in close to student activities.
Mm-hmm.
So we're continuing to work with bookkeepers to kind of tweak that.
And just one follow-up, as I thought about your question about the merging of schools, you know, as I think about that, had nothing to do with Bob looking at me.
[laughing].
Well, the premiums are based on payroll. You know, your workers' comp is based on
payroll, property values. So, when you say consolidate, I, I didn't know if you meant just overviewing the same amount of employees and the same amount of buildings and all that. If nothing changes on that perspective, it doesn't save money. But I, usually, if you're going to merge schools, I would assume there's going to be somewhat of a reduction in payroll. There's got to be some reduction in property values, I would think. But I, I don't know where, where this is coming from.
We, we haven't pinned that down, in essence, yet. But in essence, what we're going to do is, if, if voters agree, is eliminate six of the seven federal tax IDs and be one.
Okay, so the properties all stay in the same locations, or they stay in the same...
Yeah, the best example, Michael, is you, you and I are already trying to take advantage of that, how we do property coverage.
Yeah.
So you've got $130 million of property coverage, and, and any one of the schools can, can access that, that claimed amount. $130 million is, is, is not necessarily the amount that would be needed if all six sites suffered a catastrophic event. So we're, we're pooling already from kind of that standpoint in workman's comp and others.
Right.
But I still want to revisit.
Duly noted.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
A lot of meetings. Thanks.
All right. So move on to six-point hour reports to the board, and we'll start with the cult report.
Cult report. First of all, congratulations, all of you, on successful budgets. It was really an extraordinary year, I think, for all the years that I've been here. One of the best. And looking at the cult report, Megan, did you want to speak to maybe one of the early things that is happening as a result of the merging of special ed and opportunities that have been presented?
Yep. So a little bit of a follow-up from the budget conversation. As you all know, in both Heinsburg and Charlotte, there were significant and historic decreases in the population of preschool students with disabilities that we serve. On their own, neither of them would have been able to sustain the level of staffing they had for the number of students served. So we, as part of the budget process, consolidated staffing, and have, over the past several months, worked to develop what will become a shared service provision model for Charlotte and Heinsburg. That will still have a school-based program housed for the coming year in Heinsburg, because although both had decreasing enrollment, Heinsburg's was slightly bigger. But it also gives us an opportunity to explore more non-traditional service deliveries that we have been wanting to try for a while. And it allows us to adequately serve kids with very high-quality services that, that if we needed to reduce in both buildings and fraction positions, we wouldn't have been able to do it successfully. So still a lot of kind of development that will happen in terms of defining it, and, you know, are fielding sort of the natural questions that we would, and anytime something changes. But we're excited about the opportunity.
Kelly?
Use the words "non-traditional" and "providing high-quality services." What does that mean?
So primarily, most services for three- to five-year-olds with disabilities are provided in our school-based programs, with some small-scale opportunity for either kids to just come in and receive services. We don't have a lot of choice beyond that as an SU, and that's what we're trying to expand. So if a family is in a high-quality partner pre-K program, of which we have now established strong partnerships, we've wanted to explore whether or not it's an option to provide services there in a more embedded model, similar to the co-teaching model that we would do in a K-8 classroom. So this provides us, this is one opportunity that we can take advantage of to explore that. I wouldn't say that we're ready to do that on September 1st, but we're, it's, it's an exciting opportunity.
Instead of calling kids to a location, we just go to where they are in the program that it's...
Correct. Particularly for families who are already, who need full day care, which is a high percentage of the families that we serve. Instead of moving kids from their center to our program and back, it's exploring whether or not we can serve them there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great, thanks.
Jeff, want to maybe speak a little bit about what happened here at CVU last Monday?
Sure. So last time we were together, I mentioned the upcoming in-service, which happened on February 29th, and that the focus of the morning would be to view and discuss the documentary, Most Likely to Succeed. So we did that as a group, and it's a movie that really tackles the topic of how different the world is for which we're preparing our students, and how quickly it is changing. It shares things like 65% of today's grade schoolchildren will end up in jobs that are yet to be invented. The current length of a millennial's job right now is 2.6 years, and millennials will have 15 to 20 jobs in their lifetime. And by 2020, 40 to 50% of all income-producing jobs will be short-term contracts freelance work. And so the emphasis on creating learners that are highly adaptable, flexible, collaborative, people who are really good learners, because they are going to have to reinvent themselves on many, many occasions. And so it was a, it was an excellent opportunity for all of us to, to think about these things, watch the film, and then discuss in small groups that were across the grade bands, across the schools. And each group was asked to discuss what they, they witnessed, and then also to finish the statement, imagine if, dot, dot, dot. And each group came up with an imagine-if statement, painted it on the cafeteria wall. I urge you all to walk by it if you can this evening and take a look at it. It was inspirational, and since then, we've had some wonderful conversations with our faculty and staff, and I think it has really ignited a passion that was there already, but has, has changed the conversation in a way that we really feel good about. And we're talking about how we can make sure that you all get an opportunity to see it.
Yeah. Thank you. I would just add one more thing. Last year, when we did board orientation, we heard from our new board members that attending a board meeting without having had the orientation was pretty much like drinking from the fire hose. You know, because you come here, and especially this meeting, right, because it's even backwards from how we usually do things. So this year, we met with the new board members, the central office leadership team, met with the new board members at 5 o'clock, to just really focus on who are we as an organization, what are our communities, populations, demographics, that kind of thing, and what does a board meeting look like, and how do we even get an agenda? So we talked about work plans, we talked about the retreats. Hope it was better for you than it has been for other people, but just wanted to say...
It was great.
So that's just part one. And so then, after having been to a board meeting, then we'll do part two, which will be more the comprehensive new board member orientation. So just wanted to share that. It was kind of nice to be able to just sit with, there were three of the four new board members who were here, to just sit with them and to get to know them, and a little bit about them, in a much more, you know, good setting. I'm going to go right to the next thing. So I asked that we put hiring protocol on the report to the board, kind of as an annual reminder that this is the time of year where we'll start posting positions. And I just wanted to run you through how that works very quickly. First of all, I want to say that, you know, we do have guidelines, so all of the principals have the same three-page, here's how we do it. Number one rule, work with Cindy. Make sure that we're, you know, following all the rules that we need to follow. But we post our positions on school spring. I get asked a lot in, when I'm serving on a hiring committee, if that's sufficient. And the answer to that is, yes, it is. School spring is now the national place where teachers, not just in Vermont. I mean, it is a Vermont, it was a Vermont company, it was sold, but it is, if you go to a national conference, school spring is the top one. When we do certain positions, like administrator positions, we might also post in seven days. But we do not spend the money to post in, like the Boston Globe or the New York Times. It's an exorbitant amount of money, and we never found that we got any return on that. So we post through school spring. The principal then would set up a hiring committee. If it's for an administrator, I would set up a hiring committee. We would make sure that that hiring committee was representative of the stakeholder group that should be, that would be interested. So at the school level, it could be teachers from that team and other teams. It could be somebody from another field. So if it's a classroom teacher, maybe a person from special ed or related arts. If it's an administrator position, it includes a couple board members, it includes a community member. Sometimes in one school, it will include an administrator from another school, just to give that perspective. Those are local board decisions, in terms of what the complement is. And we, every time, look at what are we looking for? What is the ideal description of the position we're looking for, so that then, when we start interviewing, we have already in our mind, this is what we're looking for. I can give the example that we will be posting a position for principal in Heinsburg tomorrow. Last week, I met with the Heinsburg faculty and staff, and said, tell me what you're looking for. And so, I have pages of that, of here's what they're looking for. And now, we turn that into, here are the themes, and that becomes, you know, the basis for the questions we ask, and the assessment that we do of the candidates. So we try to, like, make sure that it all hangs together. We do certainly round one of interviews with candidates, and then sometimes do round two, or sometimes we do site visits, or sometimes, for teacher positions, we ask people to come to our schools and guest teach, so that you can watch the person, so that happens. I drive hard the message that we need to do really good reference checks, so make sure that we know who we're getting. And then, if it's a teacher position, that's going to come to you for the board, just for approval. If it's an administrator position, the superintendent by law is going to bring a candidate from the committee to the board, and the board can say, no thanks, go back and get another candidate. But it's not that the superintendent brings several candidates. The superintendent brings one candidate to the board. What else? I think that's it. Questions?
Elaine?
Yeah.
We also require that in the first round, for licensed positions, only licensed people are interviewed. We only go back to the second round, we only go back if we don't find a viable candidate in the license pool. They have to be eligible for licensure or provisional if they don't have a license.
So one of the things that has changed, in, in this little page, there's a whole section here on HQT, Highly Qualified Teacher. So that was a construct of Nickelby, that we did, we were not necessarily enamored with. It sounds good, doesn't it, Highly Qualified Teacher? But the benchmark for determining that did not always line up with what we thought. You know, I mean, I could point to really, really excellent teachers who might not have met the definition, because the definition was more about, like, checking off the boxes. Did you do three of this, two of that, and five of that? But, at the point that HQT was in play, it was really important to all of us that we checked all those boxes, because we lost money, not just where they didn't hire an HQT person, but across the whole system. So that used to be a real thorn in our side, but it is gone. The new ESSA no longer has the HQT provision. Obviously, the Agency of Education still cares that we hire highly qualified teachers, and trust me, so do we. But we don't have the added burden of making sure that they've had this specific coursework or that kind of thing. Anything else, Cindy, that I might have missed, or...
The other questions that comes up for us from time to time is how we post, internal versus external.
Yeah.
And that can be on a case-by-case basis, based on why the person is, how the person was originally hired, or why the opening occurs, or when the opening occurs. The principals try in their nomination forms that we started using last year, to give you more of a background of the process, how many candidates were interviewed, how many people applied. But timing does play in this time of year. Generally, we'll post internally and externally. However, if somebody was hired last August, for example, in a full search, you may see some come forward as internal only, simply because we worked with them for a year, they're a good candidate, and the only reason they were on a one-year contract is because of the timing they were hired. But we'll try and make sure we're really descriptive in our nomination form, so that you understand that. For the most part, we will go internal and external simultaneously, though. But there are times when it makes sense to go internal only.
Thanks. Any questions from board members? Great, thanks.
Amanda, these acronyms will float over your head for a year or so, and then you won't care.
[laughing].
Because they become, they become nouns, they don't become, they become nouns themselves, and then you learn the context around them, so I don't really, you won't care.
Well, one, one of them has just gone, HQT, gone.
Gone. But it's replaced with ESSA, so who knows?
[laughing].
So I assume 6.3, the study committee update, will you be doing that?
Sure, and others can jump in.
Okay.
So you should have received in your packet, it's embedded in the last minute, it's just our report to board, it's part of our obligation, so please keep everyone apprised. I just want to point out a few pieces. That April 12th, we're having Act 46 Night at CVU. We'll hear more about that coming up, but it's starting at 6:00. We'll hear more about that coming up, but it's starting at six o'clock, originally we had it to about 5:30, but it's starting at six, six to 7:30. It's going to be in this room to keep it intimate, based on what we anticipate for numbers of people coming out. Our EPN is going to be broadcasting for us. We'll have it interactive, we'll have presentations, but we'll also have opportunity for people to talk. So I'm going to pull a couple of people together to help with planning that. A couple other pieces I just want to point out is the report status. It is now with the Agency of Education. Agency of Ed will review it, give us feedback, we expect that any day now. Then it's going to, we'll make whatever tweaks we need to it. Our study committee will be meeting on March 29th and having a vote, two votes actually. The first vote is going to be whether or not to advance the report and sort of recommendations to the State Board of Education. That formal action puts in play a number of processes. If the State Board approves on April 19th, when they have it on their agenda, then it moves into like an automatic system of moving towards a vote. More on that. So we'll have, in the March 29th meeting, we'll have two votes. One will be to advance the report to the State Board of Ed. The second will be to get a vote on public record from study committee members about their feeling about whether or not to fully support the recommendations coming out of the committee. I'll just say that we had a straw vote at our last meeting and it was unanimous to fully support, not only just advance the report forward to the State Board, but to fully support the recommendations coming out of the committee to have a vote on consolidation in ESU. We've got a lot to do for communication, so if you haven't been engaged as part of the study committee, we're looking for new recruits. Mark, do you want to say anything about?
Just, I think the most important communication thing going up is getting out the word about the need to be about Act 46 for the communities. And going forward, especially after the 29th, once it's all official and tied up, starting to get more information out, you know, frontboard forum and those sorts of areas. In general, the communication committee, we have a couple of things working PowerPoints for the, for April 12th and then for local presentations to select boards and PTOs and other stakeholder type groups, and to push it forward from there. But yeah, it's going to be full bore come April. April and May are going to be a big push, since a vote would probably be June 7th, is that correct?
June 7th.
Would be the likely vote date, so.
And.
Australian ballot.
Australian ballot. And each, the recommendations from the committee are each of the so-called necessary school districts, and that's Charlotte, Heinsberg, Shelburne, Williston, would have to vote yes within their own communities. St. George, because they do not have an operating school, they are advisory. Part of the articles would be that they would, if everybody else voted yes, St. George voted no, they would have until December to go back to their community and get a second vote. But our recommendation is to have really an all-in. We want everybody on board. Otherwise, it gets this convoluted model of, you know, the least we could go down to would be four boards, and what do we gain with that? Nothing, at this point. Mark, I interrupted your discussion about communications.
No, no, that's fine. You probably interrupted me right at the time where I needed to be interrupted.
I just want to add one more thing before we move on. If you're planning to run for the consolidated board, you'll get more information related to this. And what you can start thinking about is that you would need to get your petitions. You know, you'll need at least 30 signatures, that's a percentage of the community, or at least 30. I would recommend get 35, 40, you know, just to get your name out there. But you'll get more information about that. But the time that you would be collecting signatures would be after the study committee votes to move everything forward and prior to an official warning that goes out. So there's like a, you'll have like a week or two to pull that together.
I'm wondering if we should do a one-page that just says, hey, board members? Because the likely composition of this new board is the people sitting around this table and in the local boards, right? That is the likely composition. I think it would be important that right now they would see, you know, we can just plug in the timeline, it might not be exact, but at least people would know, oh, I need to be ready this week to get out and get petitions.
Yes, so it's, you know, if you have this one pager, you could just highlight, you know, these last couple bullets in the middle, it's, you know, it's in that period.
I think we needed to make sure that every town clerk was aware that this was in process.
So central office takes care of keeping town clerks in the loop, but it's too early, you can't go to your town clerk now and say, can I have a petition? Because we're not there.
Okay.
But we want to make sure that anybody who wants to run
Yep.
has the full opportunity. And I think it might even be helpful to have just an informational meeting if people show up, or, you know, multiple access points for getting information on this.
But it brings up a good point. There's like, there's like the deep-down mechanics of how the school district would operate, it's things like that, or how the new school board would operate. And that's separate from the narrative and the articles of how the Act 46 will go forward and the discussion points that we'll have. And I guess I would ask that we try to unify on our letters to the community once we do move forward.
Yeah.
And just try to keep the letters that we write to boards' corner and things like that in our domain and share them.
Yeah.
Can't tell people not to write editorials, but if you have issues, just to bring them up and we can discuss them beforehand in the committee, I think that's appropriate.
They become good FAQs.
Yeah.
If someone has a serious concern, it's an opportunity to respond, you know, acknowledging a concern.
And two boards are running simultaneously for, once it happens?
You are already elected for.
Yes, so everyone who's on a board right now is in service until your term runs out, you know, let's say your service is up March of, let's use 2017.
Right.
You're still on the board. So what would happen is for a new consolidated board, Secretary of Education meets with a new board in July, after town clerks have certified votes. There's, you know, the board's not operational until it meets with the Secretary of Education. That would happen in July. And then that board needs to start getting ready for budget, adopting policy, hiring superintendent, blah, blah, blah. The existing boards continue to operate. You've all adopted and gone to your communities and asked for approval of budgets and so forth. Those need to continue. So the current existing boards have duties that they need to fulfill, and so two sets of boards would be running side by side.
For one year.
For one year, until.
Supplanting the CSSU board, though.
No, CSSU board.
There could be three.
CSSU board, this board will be in existence
And the local board.
Until June 30th of 2017.
So it's conceivable that somebody's on the local board and the CBU board and the consolidated board.
That's true.
CSSU.
That's true.
I just want to say.
No, sorry, CSSU.
It's likely that that will happen.
Welcome to your world.
Yes. No, however, no. Actually, no, I wasn't thinking, welcome to my world. I was really thinking that however, we would make sure that when we do the work, and I'm pretty sure it's on your list here, of figuring out the roles and responsibilities of each board, that we make sure it all makes sense. And that we're not asking people to duplicate efforts and that we would have some, some meetings would even be simultaneous.
Yeah.
Right? Because it would be, you know, it could just be like, these are the actions for this board, these are the actions for that board. So I wouldn't want anybody sitting here thinking, I don't want to run for that board, because I've already, I'm already serving on two. Because we would make it work. We'd make sure that we're really efficient about this. Because we do want people who have been in service to our communities already to be the ones who step up to the plate, to serve on a new board. It makes the most sense. You're the ones who know the system.
But three boards could be a little bit overwhelming.
Well, you know, they would be very, as Elaine said, very distinct roles. And it's likely that, you know, it makes sense to continue with the carousel format for the local and the CSSU board. It might make sense to have a new consolidated board operate like the study committee does now, meets on a separate night and does their work and they go away. So, but they would be distinct duties. But it wouldn't necessarily, there would be some crossover, but there would be distinct roles and responsibilities by statute.
Well, remember, the consolidated board is not going to have any real day-to-day business.
No. I mean, their work would be developing budget and planning for the annual meeting. And that's going to be Bob's job.
We'll make sure you and we are not confused in this journey.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's great.
Right. We'll try.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. You've done a tremendous amount of work in tying a little stuff together.
Initiators.
Appreciate it.
Colleen has done a lot of work on this. The writing of the articles, I don't know if you've had time to read them, but that was really a solid piece of work that.
That I did not touch. That was Mark and Keith and Chris.
No, but the narrative that goes behind it. It's all.
Colleen did everything.
You don't want that.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you.
Okay. So move on to discussion matters and 7.1, discussion about the professional development calendar. Part of this is we all had conversations at our local boards and we want to feed those up into this board and have a discussion about it. And would we do that? I guess, since we've all done that and had a conversation with our local board mentors about.
Share. Share what happened at each of your boards.
Yeah, we don't need to discuss the actual policy, but just discuss what we talked about. I think, I'll start with Shelburne, and I think we're all pretty open to it. We had, you know, there were some concerns from community members in the last four or five days about disruption of routines and childcare. And I think answers that we got from Patty and Alan about how our Imagine After School program will take, will adjust to take care of anyone in that one-hour span that changes, they'll be able to do that. So I think that's a huge relief. We get the, you know, we get the need for professional development and the changing, all the changing curriculums and all the different requirements that everyone has. We were unanimous with our minimum quorum, but it was, it was a good idea. So, Heinsberg?
We heard similar feedback. We did not have adequate notice to our community about it, so some people scrambled and submitted some feedback that they could, but most of the feedback was along the lines of what you discussed. I would add that we had a middle school teacher there who was at the meeting for the presentation, but stuck around for this discussion. And in all honesty, I was a little taken aback by her opposition to it, for scheduling purposes.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit, so we could understand?
She talked about how this would be a scheduling nightmare for her, trying to fit in the substance of what she needs to convey to students, and juggling their schedules on a Tuesday afternoon would be very difficult. And I think sum and substance was she was very much against it. We did have another parent that was there for the same presentation, and, you know, she urged, not surprisingly, to have all the schools, including CBU, on the same release schedule.
We had that same, we've had a lot of feedback in Williston on this, through lots of different media, and a number of emails, fair amount of pushback from parents on this, and including at our meeting tonight. And I've had feedback, I've had pushback from a few teachers who aren't supportive of this as well. And we had, in our meeting, we discussed wanting to see the direct data from schools who are currently doing this, on what kind of system they have and what their initiatives are. Are they doing it once a week, or do they have once a month? Because that, that's pretty silent in the COLT report on exactly what the other schools are. They're referenced as having moved in the direction of some sort of program, but nothing specific. And we proposed the idea, we, a few members on the board, of considering a change like this to be part of a contract negotiation with teachers, instead of it being something we tackled at this point in time, that we're a year away from contracting, or less, from contract negotiations, and that maybe some professional development change happens at that juncture and not something we look at changing at this point. So I would say our meeting, we didn't have much sort of, I don't know, I don't think it was a resounding support for this from our meeting.
I haven't heard support of it from anyone in our community, except, yeah, could you elaborate a little bit more? You weren't able to in that meeting. Do you mind doing it here?
I don't know if it's appropriate.
I've been trying to find somebody who supports it. I just love to pick a brain.
Is it a good time or not?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sort of a weird role, because from the CBU principal and in the community. I mean, I had the distinct pleasure of, when I worked in Montpelier, of having this schedule. And it's, the one that we're proposing is very similar to, I mean, it's basically exactly the same as the one in Montpelier. It's also identical to, or it's very similar to what's going on in Chinon East, South Burlington, I think Burlington as well.
And Rutland.
Rutland.
That was the fourth one, I should be saying.
There are quite a few districts. It's just, there are a few benefits that I think are, that don't necessarily appear right in the numbers. One of the, one of the major benefits that I saw is just the power of what happens within the school community. So currently, the in-service days that we have are so spread out that, and it's hard to continue the learning. But I think it's also, there's something powerful that happens when you meet weekly, when you meet regularly, and you really focus on the work that matters. So we followed in Montpelier, the professional learning communities or a PLC model, I don't know if folks are familiar with that. But what that model does is it empowers teacher leaders. So we had a much smaller school, but we had about eight groups of teachers who were led by another teacher, focusing specifically on student work and how that student work, kind of what it meant to the teacher, how it supported our graduation standards, and these amazing interdisciplinary dialogues would evolve. And there's just, I mean, the thing that's hard to talk about is what happens if you have that FaceTime together as a faculty and you have a common direction, common protocols, and a vision for where you're moving. So speaking for what I saw within the school, and I, with all due respect to what we've, you know, done for in-service here for a long time, it is heads and tails above what we currently have. So when I speak, you know, when Jeff shares those statistics earlier about what our current, what the world is asking of our students, I mean, I think it begs the question, do you believe those statistics or not? I'll tell you that years ago, when people started talking about 21st century skills, I was somewhat skeptical. You know, how important is creativity? How important is innovation? How important is problem solving? Can we really measure it? Why would it be different now than it was 15 years ago? I am so converted to the fact that we need to be, that we, we have a duty to our students to reimagine some of the things that we're doing in these schools to prepare them. Without the weekly, regular time for our teachers, we are going to be doing them a tremendous disservice and we're not going to accomplish what we need to accomplish. So I understand some hesitancy because it's a change. Speaking as a, again, just observing the Montpelier community, it was just normal. I came into it, it was like, you know, once a week, you plan on it, it was, families had no problems with it from, certainly from a high school perspective. Students were appreciative of a little bit of extra sleep, but it doesn't really affect the school day overall. There's a little bit less time in one day a week. But you've also added in those full day, you know, the current full day in services that we have now, you don't have kids out of school. You know, kids are in school. You know, kids are, are in school instead of being out of school. You know, four days didn't seem like a big deal. But from, from a parent perspective now, what I find happens to me, and I, I'm kind of a knucklehead about, like, I shouldn't be surprised by the in-services when they happen for my daughters who are in Williston. But I, we'll come back from a school break, we're like, oh, in-service day, like, we didn't get coverage, we didn't, you know. When, for, I think it's a little easier to plan when it's a weekly, regular schedule that you can count on. My, both my wife and I work, and so, you know, I don't know how many other families are, probably quite a few families are in that position. We do have daycare or after-school care lined up already. It's a matter of that going a little bit, you know, just making it instead of at three, a little bit earlier. And the reality is that the amount that we pay for those full day in services, the costs are some, are negligible when you look at the hour shakeout over the years. So, I think it's just a, I'm passionate about this. I would probably never go to another Williston school board meeting because I jumped out of our own school board meeting. But I think it's so important for where we're headed as a school district and, and very selfishly, very important for CBU. And I also think it's better from a, from a parent, having lived through it. But I understand that people get concerned. I also know what happens on social media. I've been watching the Williston Facebook group and they accepted me, which is nice. But I think what happens is people get, get hyped up without really looking at the reality of the situation. And then that just spreads so quickly that it's hard to, you know, as, as leaders, I think we, we have a responsibility for not just reacting to that, but really thinking thoughtfully about what makes sense for our schools.
But I, I think it's also about educating our, the community. And I don't think, you know, what was in our school newspapers was enough to provide them with the information that they may need to, to, you know. Because I think some of the comments have been, I need a little bit more information. I might support this, but I don't feel like I have enough information. And I don't know if we're, you know, are we asking permission or is this like a, I mean, that's what I'm, I'm sort of having a hard time figuring out. And was Montpelier just the high school or was it the whole school system?
The whole, the whole district.
Yeah, and I think this kind of dialogue is very important. And it, it may seem like we bring something out and people get upset and they write the negative. I think more people will complain about the negative than will praise the positive. And that's always a tough judge. But I think what we can do from this is have great conversations, like having Adam tell us these types of things. And he didn't even talk about the high school sleep study, but, but then getting FAQs and answering those questions and going back to our districts and, and, like you said, educating them. We're not making the decision now, we're having a conversation and then trying to spread that knowledge. So, what I would encourage. But the other, the other thing is we do have two more districts that want to weigh in here.
I, I was going to ask if Jeff would be willing to verbalize what he mentioned at our school board meeting, which was have the, the teachers teach the children in a continuous learning format. And yet, we don't do that with our teachers. We teach our teachers in a block here and wait three months and then expect them to be able to pick up where they left off and train them again and then wait another three months. And that's just not a good way of teaching. So, we don't do that, we, we don't have that same philosophy with our teachers as we want to have happen in our schools. Was that kind of what you...
You did it probably better than I did. We just had to, yeah, we learn a lot about how the brain learns best and we're preaching to our teachers. You chunk the information in small pieces, you let it consolidate, you let them work with it, you let them try, fail, support them, tweak. And that's not at all the model we're currently employing.
Right.
Yeah, Paula, you had a question?
I just have a question for Adam. As you spoke, did, have you had any opposition from the teachers or any parents to the schedule here?
No, I've...
At the high school level?
Only heard support.
Yeah. I mean, I, in terms of our, the CBU board, I mean, having him preach a... And have, be so positive about it and also of him living it in Montpelier. I mean, the CBU board was, was ready to take action on it next month.
Dave, I gotta make a comment. One thing I didn't hear, seen any of the reporting or any discussion about was just additional cost to the district to implement this policy. Meaning, we have to run different bus runs, those sorts of things. I think that's an important conversation we need to have in this time where our budgets are so tight. I think that's important information for us to have to evaluate the decision.
We talked about it in that in Williston too and asked for that.
The second, two more comments. The other comment I would say is, at least in the Heinsberg perspective, I just think a lot of people felt a bit disenfranchised by the process. Whether it was late notification or not, I think when we say to our, to the, the parents, especially, high school's different because those kids can, they're not available. They can stay home by themselves. I think when we say, this is what's going to happen, deal with it, that's how they feel is versus, this is what we're thinking about doing. It's just how we present it to them, let people think about it, digest it, so on and so forth.
Can I just respond to that? Because that's exactly what's on the agenda tonight. That's why we discuss one month and take action another month, so that we can have the discussion. And so that, this came up in one of the meetings and I can't even remember now which one I was at. But this is for discussion. We'll know at the end of tonight, after we hear all of this, I'm furiously taking notes and I'm sure so is everybody else, that we then have to take stock and say, okay, where are we with this? And what is it that we come back to next month?
Heinsberg parents were giving an email at 7:30 this morning.
Yep, I know. That was a mistake.
No, it was a mistake. It was a mistake. The third thing I would say, which probably isn't going to be popular, I wish, kind of along the lines of what I think Amanda said, is, this is a tough thing, but, you know, sometimes I don't think we're a little reluctant to if our teachers are voicing opposition to them. Challenge them to help us find a better solution for this. Say to them, I've been across the negotiation table twice now. I, I know what happens when I know what's realistic to expect. But challenge them and say, hey, we're developing you, we're going to make you better teachers, better people for your career. Would you willing to help us make this better for yourselves and for the kids in the school? Let's ask them for some time. Let them say no. If they say no, we deal with it. Let's get it on the record.
I appreciate you saying that. I think most white collar industries, people say yes, right? I mean, it's a chance to invest an hour of your time once a week to become a better professional. I mean, that solves all of our questions, right? You don't disrupt the schedule, you don't change the classroom time, you know, it all works out hunky-dory if people had an hour a week to invest in their professional development.
Least we can do is ask.
Did you guys have any comments from Charlotte or?
That was one.
That was, oh, yeah. Sorry, other comments?
The, we had a general conversation, I think there was lukewarm support in general. I know Barbara Ann is very much in favor of this for all the reasons that have been stated. I'm interested to hear what the parents have to say going forward. You know, I know, and now I'm going to talk outside, talking within the contract as it exists. The hour a week, it's actually a schedule I've had with my kids already before we moved to Vermont. It's easier to deal with than having those four days in the middle of nowhere and dealing with daycare that way. But there needs to be an education process to the parents over the next month. Not just one, maybe not just one post in the, in the newsletter, which was, which was good. I mean, it was, it was good. But talk about a little more of what that means, that that hour after school is going to be covered by the after-school program, whose name continues to change. What is it now?
That's Jeff.
And the, you know, sports or buses or whatever. Parents just need to be reassured. So, one concern of theirs will be, where's my kid going after school? They just need to be reassured that's all being taken care of. And then you can, once you cover that base, then you're, then you're talking how benefits are going to be.
I would kind of be interested in hearing back from more teachers. We also got feedback from a teacher. She said she can't do much with an hour. I don't know if that's because perhaps she's not organized, I don't know. But we got a lot of parent feedback. I'd really like to know more about what the teachers think. We talked in our meeting about doing a survey or something. I don't know if that's something that would be worthwhile. I don't know, what did other groups hear from?
You know, I can speak a little bit to that because this conversation really, you might remember, started last year. And it started because I had been meeting with teacher groups. I meet with teachers monthly and in two particular instances, last year, I met with big groups of teachers. And they pretty much were saying like, we're dying. We cannot do all the work that is on the table. We really support the work, but we can't do it. It's just too much. And, you know, there, there were lots of other stuff, but that was one of the things. So, that started, you know, a conversation about like, how could things be different? And talk to the board chairs about it, talk to people here. But it really was a very like, low-key, but the thought, I think everybody thought that there might be a proposal on the table at some point. And then in my monthly meeting with the association, in probably February, around this time of year, when I put it on the table to them, for, for the K8s, 100% support. Around the table, they were saying, yes, we need this. At that time, the kind of pushback was coming more from the high school teachers. Just that, this is the association leadership, so there are only, you know, a few, maybe 30 teachers altogether. And it was obvious to me, like in a 40-minute conversation, it was obvious to me that they weren't all in agreement. So, I said, you know what, you guys ought to have this conversation and get back to me. And what got back to me was that, you know, at the high school, the concern was then, they didn't know what they'd be doing. It wasn't so much that they didn't support the concept, but they wanted like, to know for this, these two hours, because we're not talking about one hour. So, that's kind of a misunderstanding on the part of the teacher. I mean, by design, I know that the principals chose, the K8 principals chose Tuesday afternoon because that has traditionally been faculty meeting time. And so, now you add faculty meeting time to an early release and you've got a good chunk of time to do work. So, that was the concern then. When I've met with the association this year, I mean, the leadership, I've not heard any pushback. I, I was in Heinsberg when I heard that. I hadn't, I had, nobody has contacted me to say anything, from, from the teacher ranks, to be concerned.
And that, and the...
To show concern.
The comment, just tying into yours, where Jeff mentioned this, where teachers are, you know, have language in their contract to stay late on Tuesday for this meeting. So, then they can use that language in addition to the extra hour to get a solid chunk of time.
I was just going to mention that all the faculty are aware of it. They were, sent an update about two weeks ago, so the information has been shared with them. That's very similar to what you brought in.
And, and I met with the association, but I didn't meet with the whole big group. I met with a small, but I know that they left the meeting with me and went upstairs to their whole big group. I, they would have gotten back to me if there had been a concern.
Do you have one more thing?
Yeah, do we have the ability to change the schedule next year, given that it's the middle of a contract? Like, can we say that these three days that are in-service are actually going to be school days and you're going to do your in-service time? We can do that? I thought so, but somebody said not, that's just me checking.
You're not really adding teachers.
You're just shuffling, you're shifting it around a little.
Can I speak as a parent of Williston? So, I have, my daughter is an eight-year-old in Allen Brook School.
All these principals have their kids in Williston schools. What does that say?
But I guess when I think about it, I, I cannot come up with a reason that my daughter would be worse off with this model. I can only think of positive outcomes with the teachers receiving this level of support, professional development. If I only think about my daughter, I don't know how it's a detriment. You take away all the other obstacles that, that people are concerned with, worried about. Four extra days, the, the level of professional development that the teachers are receiving, the trust that I have in Greg and Audrey, because Greg and Jackie and John. I know that the teachers are going to get high-level professional development, which is going to lead into high-level instructional delivery, which is going to lead to my daughter being in a better place. So, I guess just speaking as a parent, that's, that's my thought process when I look at this.
I mean, and you also, you, like, we love to make analogies here. You know, let's make the program management analogy of, you know, you start down the path and if you make a small error up here, but you don't check until you're this far down the path, you're off by this much. But if you start down this path of the first year and then you meet with your team and you do some collaboration and you get back on track, you're back on common message. And, and you're, you're, you're tracking as you go through the year with these hour to two hour as you go down the path. So, you know, speaking, you know, hearing parent, administrator...
Engineer, has a lawyer weighed in yet?
I'm still evaluating.
You're still evaluating. I'll take it under advisement, he says. You know, there is. Yeah. It depends. Yeah, it's great to get all these, these, these perspectives and...
I, I heard a couple other things in Charlotte, I thought. So, one of the things I heard in Charlotte, and I can't remember if it came from the parent group that was there, I know, there were only three parents there, but, was the notion about, would we consider a different day of the week?
That was from Susan. Just...
Susan, one of the board members.
Tuesday, it was more about it being early in the week, coming back. You go full day Monday and then a short day Tuesday, it just feels a little off. Understanding that the faculty meeting is on, is on Tuesday, Wednesday seemed to make more sense.
Right.
Or Thursday. We'll call that teaching momentum.
Yep.
Just a point for clarification too. Williston, the general support for spreading out professional development was there. It was more that people really just seemed to push back on that one hour of school. So, we're like, they really supported the more frequent professional development, they just, I guess they were freaking out about the schedule changes or...
I think it's the schedule, I think it's figuring out...
Ask the comment at the expense of...
Something.
Yeah, I think it's figuring out, you know, we just would get, we get a litany of stories of how am I going to manage my kids' schedules and they're, they're, you know, they're dropped off at, at this place on Tuesdays. Is that place going to let them get dropped off earlier? You know, it's all that kind of logistical stuff.
And that's, you know, and that's, 90% of that is anxiety and you just ask the question, which can solve some of it. And let's just spend a month asking questions and developing answers and hopefully, you know, do we move, do we move for thinking about this for a month and then coming back and being ready to act on it based on a discussion next?
So, here, here's where we are. 175 days in your, in the calendars, they're, that's set. We don't have a choice about those, it's the regional calendar, you've all seen that. What comes into play, and honestly, starting in February, Sandy starts getting the calls about when are the school vacations, how, when are the days off? Because people are also planning, not just the long vacations, they want to know when the long weekends are. So, this, we could postpone this, we could have another discussion next month and we could act in May. But that means that when people call, we say, well, the board hasn't acted yet. You, we can guarantee you those 175 days and what looks like to be the first day of school and what looks like to be the last day of school, but...
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, like, let's, let's act next month based on a conversation that we have in our communities. And we put it as an action item and there will be an opportunity to discuss the action item. And if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass.
That is a board conversation.
You know, is that what we want to do, Colleen?
It seems to me that part of, part of what we should be calling apart is what's the board role and what's administrator's role. So, administrators are coming to us and saying, we need time to work with our faculty in small bits and chunks so that we can implement the policy that you board members adopted for curriculum. And to implement the policy of curriculum well, we need small bits, you know, once a week. If we have parental anxiety about childcare and so forth, to me, that's like a whole other issue. You know, do we need to look at how we provide some alternatives for parents and, you know, what does that look like? To me, that's another question. But I, you know, I also want part of our work as, as a board to stay clear about our role. And our role is adopting policy and asking our administrators to implement. And of course, we've got our ear to the ground with our local community members. So, it is really important that when we hear stuff in the community, we bring it back. But I, you know, I'm, I'm just not sure how much we can do... But I, you know, I'm, I'm just not sure how much we can drag this out. I'm not in favor of some kind of, you know, extensive deliberation on this point.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that we could discuss this with our community members over the next month, and put it on, you know, and then act on this with some FAQs over there. And Lorna, you?
Well, it's also our legal responsibility as board members to approve the calendar.
Right.
So, I mean, that's sort of where this interface was. The calendar, in some ways, is, is dealing with trying, trying to meet everybody's needs, and, and within 185 days, whatever it is. So we're struggling with that.
And just think of the, the number of years that we deliberate with Martin Luther King Day.
Yeah.
You know, at some point, it's, we just, we need to move forward.
So Dave, you're just advocating, kind of going with the plan as set forth?
Let's go with the plan as set forth. Answer questions of people in the community, if we have a problem, then it comes up.
I was just going to say, governance is choosing, and you're going to have to be reminded of your legal responsibility as a board member to do what you think is in the best interest of, you know, of our schools and our kids. And you're not going to satisfy everybody. That's what governing is. So you can listen to them, you can pay attention to them, we can contemplate alternatives, but ultimately, we have to make a decision to do one thing or the other, and not everyone's going to be happy with either of those choices.
And certainly, folks were not happy with four full days of, of professional development at that level.
Right. Lots of complaints.
And, and David, I don't know what you're meaning of, let's talk to the community, because to me, consistency is important, and I wouldn't want one community getting information and another not, or questions asked. So I don't, I don't know if that was a general statement, or if there's a plan.
I think, I think a, I think I would ask, Elaine and Jeff and Adam can certainly, he gave us the presentation, take some of these questions and create a, a one-sheet Q&amp;A that we can all share, you know, over the next three weeks.
And that would be consistent.
And I apologize if folks found out, you know, today, you know, that's unfortunate. Hopefully, the next four weeks, and it's even, actually, it's five, because, because of vacation, we don't meet for an extra week.
Oh, right.
So we have even more time to-
Yeah, that's right.
-spread the word, so.
But we're not doing that work. I mean, me as a board member, I'm not going to go to my community and talk about it.
No, I think you're, I think we're going to generate this information, and I imagine, like, Alan and Patty are going to put it back into the Shelburne Community School Newsletter, or, you know, as a way to educate parents.
Put it on our website, and put a little notice on Front Porch Forum that this-
Yeah.
You know, go to this website, and, you know, this is a contemplated change, and here's some frequently asked questions.
But Colin, you do, at least, I, you do do that work, all of us do, when you're at Lantman's, and someone walks up to you and says, what's the deal? That's when you're doing the work, and you're giving people the ability to feel like they're being heard and not being disenfranchised.
But I'm not going out and, I'm not intentionally-
No, no, no. No, of course not. But, but it's still, to Dave's point, just give the community, at least in Heinsberg, that the ability to digest a little bit. I mean, I certainly would not go back, I would not advocate, from what happened in Heinsberg today, going back tomorrow, some 30 minutes, and say that this, this, and that's a discussion matter, but to make the decision tonight, because, you know, they, I think, would lead a lot of people to feel disenfranchised. They just got to have the ability, we're all available, if they want to voice their opinions, we can hear them, not saying we're going to change, you know, we're going to say, hey, this is what I would say, this is what administrators want, it's important to them, they're saying it's the best thing for the teachers to help our kids learn better, it's the best plan overall, you know, this is, what we're going to have to do, we're going to have to figure it out. But you got to let people's voices be heard.
Yeah, I just wanted, I, just to clarify, I don't want, you know, one community to go and meet with their parent-teacher organization, somebody else take it upon themselves to write a letter to their local paper, and another community do something else. I, you know, that's not our role, it's, you know, administrators communicate on this particular piece, we need to decide the calendar. And of course, you know, we are always listening, but as Keith said, being a board member, you are going to make decisions. All of us are going to make decisions that are, are not always going to make everybody happy. Makes everybody happy 99.9% of the time.
Yeah, I think a lot of these issues are addressable, and we can, we can, you know, answer some questions and try and allay some fears.
Can I ask one more hypothetical question of that scenario?
You're opposed.
We talked about this in respect to contracts. What if some approve and some don't? Can we go forward with different calendars in our different school districts?
No.
Except one calendar.
Going up at some point.
I mean, I think that that would be problematic to parents, wouldn't it? We share purposes.
The reason I'm asking is not to be a pain in the ass-
Right.
But so that people understand this, when they're having this conversation, both with community members in the next five weeks, and that Tuesday night, 29th, when we're making the decision, that it's, it's all or nothing, from the school's perspective.
Well, I think, I think with the professional explanation of, of research on, on how teachers get the information the best way, we, we put that out, and it's in a consistent way across the, across the district. And yes, we, we talk at the grocery store, but I'm always remembering that I am not a school board member, I am a citizen when I'm at the grocery store. I do not talk on behalf of a board, I speak as a citizen.
I would say it's, it's an unfortunate juxtaposition that we have an issue where the community wasn't well-informed, maybe feels as if their voice isn't being heard. You know, we're just going to tell them, hey, you know, it's all, for one, too bad, if once was, and like, it's kind of going to happen, you know, sort of running alongside this Act 46 process. It would be nice if we could handle this in a way that community members felt that they were being heard, and had a reasonable, you know, chance to have a meaningful input, you know, with, and interact with the board in a way that they have their voices heard.
Yeah, and I, I think that answering as many questions as we can is the first step there.
Sure.
And, and seeing how folks react in the next month.
So are most boards supportive of this, then, just to kind of, because we might have a little selling to do in Williston? And I'm just trying to understand how we-
It sounded like it.
Okay. Because if we can go back and say, you know, we're by others' boards, this is where the administration is supporting it, here's pieces examples, we just-
It's a one pager, but, yeah. What we're-
This is probably going to sound somewhat cool, or maybe stupid, but why, why are we asking for the community to weigh in on this decision, when perhaps we don't ask them to weigh in on whether or not we're going to have two more days in school this year, or we're starting a day earlier, or we're adding another classroom into the school?
Here's where I can be a warrior. What I'm hearing is, we are not asking the community for their input, we are merely receiving it from those who want to provide it.
Okay.
That's what we need to be clear.
Right, we, we've always just, we've discussed the calendar, we're trying to figure out how to squeeze in professional development days, you know, two days before Labor Day to start, and then it was three days, and then, you know, well, we're going to have three days, four days, and five days, the first three days of school, and, you know, and, and the hours change, and we added time. And the boards have always been the ones to make that decision. But I think, you know, to the extent that community members, especially I hear, particularly with younger families, but they care issues, with young kids, it's a real problem, they're concerned, and, and not clear how they're going to make this work. And so I think the sooner we let people know this is what's going to happen, the more time they have to get their, their, their self-coordinated, get their care together. So I think it'd be helpful to do it earlier than later.
And coupled with what we know to be true, which is that we have a, for the K eights, a built-in opportunity for parents-
Right.
-through the Imagine Program.
Right.
All right. So, move forward, you guys will help with that.
I have a lot of notes.
A lot of notes.
A lot of notes.
Create another narrative, and we'll release that over the next couple of weeks, and share with our communities. Okay. So move to 7.2, policy.
Yes.
Any discussion on these, these five? Any? Yes?
For the news, we are, usually I do a discussion before, and then we get back to this for discussion, so much like the prior conversation, which will be brought to discussion. But I've already picked up, meeting on the names and others, and I have transitioned on, because we're concerned about the search policies, people are on the cell phones, so I would, that we have the policy committee. Just because it's on discussion this month doesn't mean that automatically that makes it for adoption, and I suspect this will be a matter of discussion of discussion, and it's more background, because people understand the difference schools have in the, the ability to search versus a police officer, for example. And then there was a little bit on student medication. But if anybody has any specific questions from their meetings, I'm happy to hear about it tonight, or your reps can bring it to me to the policy meeting next week, in the interest of time.
Okay. You want to see that? So, there were a couple comments at our meeting about the search, specifically the strip search provisions, I'm sure-
Yeah, we don't do strip searches.
Yeah, but I'm sure Clyde will raise it at the policy committee.
Yeah, I can't wait.
Okay. All right. So 7.3, retreat.
I asked to put that on there because it occurred to me that we might want to have a little bit of a discussion about whether we wanted to stay with the May 25th, I think, retreat, since we've moved the merger vote to June 7th. We discussed this, this morning, at length.
26th.
So 26th.
Thursday, 26th.
24th is too early, so.
Okay, so we had a good discussion about this in the COT meeting this morning, and in the end, we said, probably it makes sense to continue with the retreat, for the purposes of saying, the, the local part of the retreat is really a review of the year, looking back, right? How did we do? What were our goals for the year? What were the, you know, the themes that we were looking at? How well did we do? We can still do that. And then the SU part, merged or not, we're still going to have work that we're going to continue. You're still going to want to get the tech audit update, you're still going to want to get the DMC update, you're still going to want to hear, what are we going to do differently about closing those darn intractable achievement gaps? So I think it makes sense to continue, and then to think about, like, after the June 7th meeting, well, then it makes sense, if we get a positive vote, to bring the new board together, to say, okay, what, here's the work that the board that's been, and remember, it will be the same, some of the same people. Here's the work, now what do we want to do with this? What are the opportunities? So, we're prepared to move forward with the same date. I just wanted to put that on the table, just in case anybody was wondering about it.
Can you mention again what date it is?
It is now scheduled for the 26th.
Thursday, 26th.
Questions or comments? That sound good for you guys? Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So move on to action matters. 8.1, could I get a motion to adopt our final budget amount of $22,814,084?
So moved.
Okay. Lorna and Joan?
Bob did, I'm sure.
Sure.
That's good.
All right. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mark?
Second.
Second, from Polly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Motion carries. So our next dates, again, we will meet the week after school vacation on April 26th, and we'll be back to our normal schedule, where CSSU will meet at 5:00. And Act 46, public forum on April 12th, and our next Act 46 committee meeting is two weeks from today, on 29th.
29th.
March 29th. Okay. No executive session, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We adjourn.